Ten o'clock, we will go ahead at this time. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and open up our regular session for July nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen. I'd like to ask everyone to please use silence or turn off their cell phones and then join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, changes to the agenda?
We have one deletion, time action consideration.
Okay. So, our first order of business will go ahead with the comment. Orlando Gonzalez, you said you had a public comment?
Yeah, I sure did.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and read it to you. Presented concerns in this area before, repeating some again for your information. Okay, my public comments concern the, some jail, county jail issues. I'll just read these. And Denise has a copy of the original. But basically, I'm just gonna read these. Like I said, I mentioned some of these before. And I'm just back again. I have like eight items. Number one, need to serious, the commissioners, this is to the commissioners, need to seriously look at replacement of the Lake County Jail. The jail's not getting any better with age. And again, my recommendation was move jail and sheriff's department to Warner Creek Correction Site. Number two, recommend jail tour as soon as possible by commissioners. There's lots of finished work that hasn't been completed, some work with the showers. I heard the AC's having some problems, had some problems last week. The flushing of the water system, city water system is affecting the sinks functioning, I was told. Number three, why are the inmates not given outside air and sunlight time? Is this not the reason for the outside exposure? Think you guys are familiar with that? Existing conditions are not conducive to inmate health. No sunshine, no outside air, et cetera. Crowded conditions. Number four, need to provide for inmate help. Utilize emergency room if needed. Jail nurse is only available one hour per week for all inmates. Okay? And that's what the contract says, and what the current one says, but I'm sure it's the same. One hour per week, and if inmates need treatment, they should be taken to the ER. The nurse will not come back to the jail. Okay? In those type of situations. Some of that's not occurring. People are requesting treatment, and they're having to wait until, you know, for a week till the nurse comes back. Now, I doubt anyone in this room would say, well, you know, I feel bad, but I'm gonna wait a week. It's my day to go see the doctor. Go to the emergency room. Okay. What is, what is the sheriff's department doing with jail inmates to prevent recidivism? Can they increase visitation times? Years ago, the corrections officer there said that that would increase, they thought that, it's known to increase people repeating, increase visitation times. Number, I'm gonna jump to number seven. We need to look at how we are treating incarcerated individuals. We have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on remodeling and improvements on the remainder of the courthouse. But the jail basically remains, remains in the same condition as when it was built in nineteen fifty-seven. Number eight, now, in the past, I was told, told that an attorney had stated that holding an individual in the Lake County Jail was cruel treatment, especially if retained, if the individual was contained for a long period of time. Okay, we'll go back to number six. And I have the report, and I gave it to Denise. It's kind of interesting. There was an item in there, there's an Oregon Sheriff's Association report for the summer of two thousand and seventeen, Lake County Report, page thirty-four. Sheriff, the sheriff states in there, Sheriff Data, that he's added some positions, they're not paid, I don't know how they're covered, but he's added some assistants, and he states here, it's not the complete statement, that he's added a physician to accompany sheriff's office, officers to high-risk warrant service and search warrants. They're taking along the physician. Now, I don't even know right now, but who is the physician, my question, and what is the liability to the county? What if the physician gets shot when they're out there during a high-risk warrant service? I don't know if you folks are familiar with that, it's in the report. He also mentions a physician for criminal death cases. I think Lisa Cahill already has that responsibility, and I think that's who he was referring to. So, you might want to look at that. And all I have here is this, I would appreciate a written report, a written reply to my concern. Thank you for your time.
So Orlando, I guess I have two things I'll say, and they probably won't answer your questions. One, have you shared that with the sheriff, who doesn't work for us, who works for the citizens of Lake County and runs the jail?
Right.
And all law enforcement activities county-related? Have you shared that with him?
No. But you folks, can I make a statement? You folks, you folks.
That's where we, that's where we will get, that's where we will get, our request is from the sheriff. You need to share that with him.
You want, you're not gonna pay attention to your question? You're not gonna pay attention to this?
I didn't say I'm not paying attention, but we, we don't run his operation.
Oh, that's right.
I'm just telling you from one commissioner, I'm not gonna go up there and say, we're gonna start doing this, this, and this, sheriff, elected sheriff, who doesn't work for me. And you know that. What I'd like you to do is go down and share that with the sheriff. He will bring forward anything that's a concern, that he believes needs to be addressed that hasn't been addressed. That's, that's me speaking. I don't know if you have anything, Commissioner?
I take it under consideration. I agree with Dan, the elected sheriff, under his mandate is to operate the law enforcement side inclusive of the jail. He, he needs to be a partner, he needs to be one that's very much aware of this. So I, I agree, he needs to know this, and not take into it.
Please share with him, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it'd be great if you, seriously Orlando, if you could go down and visit with him about it. We do take those things seriously. You know, we have a saying that we've been talking about for a number of years, and I think you can appreciate it. I mean, you know, so that this isn't confrontational, because it doesn't need to be. You're bringing forward concerns that you have. We, as a board, try and drive in our lane, and we're not law enforcement people, and that's why it's really important for law enforcement to bring these kinds of concerns forward to the board, because our only action that we can have control over with other electeds is through the budget process. And we've been very, we've been very open to requests that we've received from all of our electeds related to cost. So that's the only place we can help out in this. We can't go and run the program. Nor should we. We're not experts, we're not trained, et cetera.
No, I'm not asking you to run the program, I'm just asking you to, these are concerns I'm bringing to your attention.
Yeah.
You can do whatever you want to with them. One thing, I was gonna make the comment, one of them was, years ago, there was the previous county sheriff over at Clamott County, they went and had charges filed against it. It basically, if I correct, there was a county commissioner there that was not approving the budgets. He was submitting budgets. And I'm not saying this is what's happening here, I'm just as an example. Basically, the sheriff asked that commissioner, why do you refuse to approve, to go along with the sheriff's budget? And like I said, it's not what's going here, it's just the fact that the commissioners handled the budget. And he told the sheriff at that time, I am not approving, I cannot approve your budgets because you are creating criminals. You are not working on the other end, you're creating criminals. And again, we know the sheriff, that's, he had charges filed against him, so it's probably some truth to that. But the bottom line is, the budget is approved by the county commissioner. That's not what it is. But anyway, I appreciate it.
And Orlando, there's one thing that, that I can't speak to with absolute accuracy. One of your questions was in there basically about the dollars that's been spent. We have spent a lot of dollars on that jail. It is a nineteen fifty-four jail, or fifty-three, however year this was built. We've put a lot of money into it, we continue to do that. We know that exactly what it is, and we continue as dollars become available to improve and make things better. And so, I'm, I need to, Bill, to look at what we put in there to answer your question, just so you have some appreciation of the things that we have done. We do do a yearly tour as the commissioners, it's mandated. We do a yearly tour every year. I can answer that question for you there on that. But on the dollar amount, just the heating and cooling system alone was huge. We just went out of budget on some plumbing, fixing plumbing up there, to about fifty-six or fifty-eight thousand dollars. We, we very much pay attention and do the best we can with the dollars that are available, and try to do the preventive stuff and the vision for long-term with what we have.
And I think what, and I don't blame you there, you're giving him a nineteen fifty-seven Chevy, and, or worse, Chevys are good. And no matter, it's a sink.
I wish it was a classic car, a fifty-seven Chevy.
It's a, I think you would agree with me, it's a sinkhole. You can't improve it, you can't improve it because you only have this much space. Okay, we were there years ago, James Ross and I, for a quick tour in there. And he said, how can people sleep in these bunks? Those, that was built in nineteen fifty-seven, as far, as you know, you've probably been in older houses, the beds are small, but people, I don't know, people were smaller. He says, if you incarcerated me, I can't sleep in any of those beds, they're too short. Okay, those things you can't deal with, because you're gonna say, well, I'm gonna knock out the wall, you know, of the, whomever is on the other side now, and make bigger beds. And so, and most people are taller and bigger than they were back in nineteen fifty-seven. And that's, what I'm saying is, you have something there that you can put money into, and it's not gonna be, you can't improve it because you have to make major improvements, major improvements. And when I spoke to your previous facilities manager, Pardue, he said, hey, there's things in there that are so out of, out of code, because this thing was built in fifty-seven, that in order to update them, you have to make major, major changes. You know, you can't, you can't say, well, you know, put in the, put in the old cast star piping, or you may not, you know, you know what I mean.
I, I understand fully, and I, I hope you can, as I can appreciate some things you're bringing forward, I hope you can appreciate some of the hard work that our employees and that we've done to try to deal with exactly what you're saying, a nineteen fifty-three model jail.
Right.
I appreciate what you're bringing forward, I hope you appreciate some of the things that we've really worked on, jail compliance, a lot of other things.
But you wanna look at something, look at this room. This is a venue room that you folks put in here. Why did you make it this big?
To accommodate the public.
Why? Okay, I don't have any problem with what you did, but you were able to do that. You were able to add more room, buy new chairs, buy this new setup, speakers, et cetera. Okay, you're limited by that jail, that jail needs to be replaced somehow. I'm not saying you need to do tomorrow, but I'm saying, hey, you need to have a jar over here on the side, I would say.
Unfortunately, our, our public comment on this kind of extended, we appreciate the discussion, but it's, it's something that hopefully someday can be remedied with a new facility.
Right. And these are, these are human beings that are in that cage over there.
Yep.
That's not right. You have to do something about it. Not right today, or whatever, some of these, but nonetheless, get a cookie jar together and start collecting money for a new jail. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Okay. We'll go to the next item. Jake, yesterday brought, of course, the normal MOU agreement with Clamott County. Mr. Bailey, you said you reviewed that on juvenile detention?
Yes, I did.
And saw no problems?
No problems, the standard is what we have done for the past over a year.
All right, good. Commissioner Winters, do you have a comment on that?
I, I'm getting there. I'll move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Lake and Clamott County as presented.
I will second it, it's been moved and seconded to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Lake and Clamott County as presented yesterday by Jake Greer, our Director of Community Corrections. This is for juvenile detention, the MOU. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, utility systems on federal lands, the Bedding and Outroom Communication Site, Dave Burnham brought that to us.
Okay, so this is for the application process to apply to twenty-year, or at the end of the twenty-year process. Do we just have?
Well, he said yesterday he'd bring forward a short letter. Denise, did he talk to you at all about it? Just a short letter with a signature requesting that from the agency. Mr. Bailey, did he talk to you at all about this old lease agreement?
No, because, and I'm sure he didn't, because I would have remembered the Indian Communication Site, so.
Well, what it is, we have a building up there, we haven't used the building in anyone's recollection for a long, long time, but the ZX Ranch uses it at no cost. We can now, because the lease has expired on that site, but the building is still ours, we can continue to use it under a new lease agreement and, and allow the ZX Ranch to use it at no cost. If we charge the ZX, then we have to go into a financial agreement with the county government. There is no charge to us if we don't charge. And what we, what we've worked out with the ZX, because they are good partners, that any requirements in the lease agreement that are upon us to maintain that building, the ZX will provide that maintenance and move up any kind of payment to the county or the federal government. So, Dave had to get a letter, short, like two paragraphs together, to initiate this lease agreement, signed by the county, that we're willing to, to do it. Isn't back here today with that letter?
Yeah, actually, I do recall something like that very generally, a little while ago. It wasn't specifically named or identified as this, but I remember him talking to me about that kind of arrangement, and I think that's fine to go forward with that.
So, we could go ahead, Commissioner, if you're okay with it, make motion that we will approve us going into a lease with the force or the senior contingent upon the letter getting to us for signature, so they initiate their process.
I'll move a motion, a motion, a second.
And it's been moved and seconded to do what I just tried to describe. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Denise, the foreclosure list, newspaper designation?
So we do this annually for designating the Lake County Examiner for publishing of our foreclosure list. This is from Denise, that's her public.
Okay.
I'll move to approve in the matter of designating a newspaper for the publication of the two thousand and seventeen Lake County foreclosure list, as the Lake County Examiner.
Seconded, it's been moved and seconded to approve in the matter of designating a newspaper for the publication of our two thousand and seventeen Lake County foreclosure list, the newspaper, our local newspaper, the Lake County Examiner would be the one designated. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Backhoe purchase. Kevin came before us yesterday, Commissioner Winters, did you get anything you would like to put on the record today relative to this backhoe purchase that Kevin spoke of?
I'm, I'm in agreement with it, I just, one thing that, just thinking of the equipment he's trading in, one piece of it could have possibly been something beneficial for other departments around here that I, I, I probably, that I could catch that we probably should look at that. I don't know if there's still an option for those other departments to consider purchase for the trade-in price or not.
And what, which piece of that?
That would be the excavator, thinking of fairgrounds, and thinking of airport, general operations, community service, for some of the projects that, that we would recover that cost over a few years of, such as, the cost of transfer units there for water main and everything, but it'd take long for it to be worth it.
So, because it is an opportunity, and this isn't, then, finalized, to give value on that for the trade-in, would you want to entertain making a motion to approve the purchase of the tractor or the backhoe? And do a whole quick follow-up on the possibility of keeping that piece of equipment, seeing if we have a way to fund the difference?
Yeah, I'm good to go forward, I, I got tied up this morning, wasn't able to give Kevin a call to see if that was an option.
Okay.
And I hate to hit, hit right in the middle of the meeting with that, but it just sort of all came together, as I was visiting this morning and thinking about.
Let's, let's do that, and see if we don't have a way to maybe do that. Mr. Bailey, process-wise, is everything else look okay with this purchase?
Oh yeah, it's subject to one of our exemptions, because it's from a single source, so.
Yeah, but is it Rule Eight or is it Rule Nine? Says Rule Eight here, probably other ones we can use. I'm probably entirely wrong.
It is Rule Eight.
Rule Eight, okay.
And Rule Nine is the board exemption, so.
So it's Rule Eight?
Yeah.
So I'll move to approve the purchase of the two thousand and fourteen John Deere backhoe, under exemption rule number eight. I will work with road master on possibility if there was a need within other county departments to enable purchase that for the trade-in price, one of the pieces of equipment on the trade-in price.
Okay, it's been, I'll second it, it's been moved and seconded to move forward with the purchase of the John Deere backhoe, as presented under exemption rule number eight, and Commissioner Winters. In the meantime, we'll work with the road superintendent on one of the pieces of equipment that we're planning on trading in to see if we can do something relative.
If, if it fits our other operations?
If it, can you, if it fits our other operations?
You know, I, I don't know, there's been talk over, just to mention that, there's been talk of the need for a tractor with a small backhoe or whatever. I just know, an example would be the airport with some of the lines breaking out there, bold nineteen forty-some miles of the cost. And we have a contractor out there that has lots of skills to operate that, we have maintenance guys that have the skills, that's what we, would we get a return on our money for several departments.
So, since you're mentioning that, you know equipment better than I do, but I understand that the excavator would have to be from site to site moved, some type of, a very system. So, would there be, because Kevin clearly stated, as much as this is gonna be a more useful tool and they can rode it on projects, it's not something they're gonna use necessarily every day. Would it be as, as good an option to consider going forward with this after you talk to him, and working out an agreement where we can partner on the cost and use it in those other places, because it's not used in those other places, but every once in a while either?
I, that's a better alternative, road department equipment usually goes with an operator.
Yeah.
Just, that's sort of necessary. So then, that's quite a cost for those departments to, to pay from fund to fund, cost of operator and that piece of equipment. But that's something to think about.
Well, I'm just thinking about today's world with our operations down there, if we couldn't have some mutual training and agreements, that we'll have pre-imposed inspections for both entities, both the road department and those that others that you use in it, pre-inspection, post-inspection, to assure that we don't have any issues with how it's being operated by other operators.
I'd like that option better than what I was.
Okay, so, we'll move forward and let you work with him on that.
I was turning it over to you with your option.
Yep. All in favor?
You said you liked it, but I hear your suggestion.
That's, that's a second note I got immediately, one from an attorney and one from a commissioner.
Did we feel as though we needed to have Darwin come in? He, he presented to us, and Mr. Bailey will ask you on this road vacation request from Flower Farm, that it's pretty straightforward given the road in question?
It is, we can go forward on this, it's really simple when the only property owner in question owns both sides of the road and everything that's gonna be affected, so. I mean, we've done this before, and as you can see in the attachment, there's another section of the road that was vacated in nineteen eighty-two, so this is sort of just cleaning up the process really, so you can just go forward with it.
Okay, so our action today will allow Darwin just to, he worked with the road superintendent as well, and he will, he'll be the one to record that just approves it without any further action.
Well, I think there's an approval by the board to vacate, but it's gotta be a county action.
Yeah.
But yeah, he would carry it out.
Okay.
So, question before I make the motion, but I don't believe it's in here anyplace, but all the cost for this, it was a burden of the person asking for the vacation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll move to approve in the matter of vacation proceeding in certain public land with the Lake County Order of Vacation to be approved. The minutes will reflect the answer range and all that.
Okay, and I will second that motion, I reply. And it's also, I was just gonna say, under discussion, it's under your question, is that what you just showed?
Yes, paragraph five of the petition says that they'll pay all the associated costs, the petitioner will.
And on our curve sheet, the last sentence of the brief summary says, the applicant is included in their submitted necessary fee and title.
My day, I remember I would point out that I haven't fully read this.
For their, I'll read it again, the applicant is included in their submitted necessary fee and title report for their joining.
Look at the pleasure in him, I could have tried to interrupt him twice.
And I will read it again.
I can't quite hear what the chair is saying, there's some static.
Any other discussion? Hearing that, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Denise, transit software.
You're gonna have a hard time making the motion, I don't think that's legal. You were smiling also, this is for you.
So we went out for RFP, we asked for three quotes, we did receive two back. The recommendation is to go with and get their transit software. They were the lowest, but also best fit army. I do have more information, but.
You covered it really well yesterday, especially for anybody in the audience that can look at yesterday's tape, they could have.
I'm going to see you made your motion in a second by yourself, because I'm obviously not important today.
That's legal, counsel, that's legal.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to accept the RFP proposal with. I'll make the motion to accept the, uh, the RFP proposal with.
Get their.
Get their transit, get their transit software proposal.
I thought you were urging. He says again, hurry up. I'll second it, it's been moved and seconded to approve the, uh, RFP with get their software in the amount of twenty-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Any issue, Mr. Bailey, with Denise coming in less than half of what was budgeted?
We do, just for the record, we will have to purchase, um, actual iPads or tablets or whatever, so, we'll be using up a little bit more of that, but not anywhere all of it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting minutes, we have three sec, two sets, two, four, three sets?
Three sets.
Three?
Three.
Three?
We have June twenty-first, July fifth, and July twelfth, that's what I have.
That is correct.
Move to approve as presented.
I'll second it, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Legal updates, full concession.
Um, yes, they were moving forward slowly on the Shumway complaints about the circumstances in, uh, Christmas Valley. Um, had a conversation with the judge and opposing counsel, and, uh, at the end of it, I suggested that Mr. Shumway, through his attorney, recommend a way to resolve the situation short of litigation, and his counsel said he would talk to his client and get back to us. And the reason for that is that it appears that most of the problems that he's complaining about have been addressed in one form or another. So, uh, he's gonna look into it and make a recommendation to me, and we'll see if we can just resolve it short of what would otherwise be as described by his, by his counsel as, um, at least a half-day litigation in court with testimony and all kinds of stuff, which doesn't make any sense at all. So, we'll see, I'll report back on any progress of the budget.
That's all.
That's it, Robyn?
Yeah. Anything, please, second it. Well, other than our, our, uh, public comment, this was a very short meeting. We don't have anything else for today?
I enjoyed the drawdown.
Well, I'm glad you did, you got to see a lot of different places.
I did.
So, at this time, being ten thirty-three, we will adjourn our regular session for July nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen.